Welcome to the Richmond Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 2nd, 2023. We will see if we have any additional guests. John, thank you for coming to listen to our discussion this evening. Okay, we'll look briefly at the agenda. Basically, it's our same items that we've been considering for the last couple of meetings. We're going to start for the first hour with an Act 47 work session, where we continue to refine what we need to do to our zoning to meet the requirements of what we were calling S-100, but now it's approved. It's in the law. It's called Act 47. And then after that first hour, we'll look briefly at other business and the updates on other business. And then we can adjourn. Are there any changes to the agenda? Anybody want to make any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the agenda as published. Anyone want to make a comment on anything that is not on this agenda? John, I'm assuming that you came to listen in on the S-100 discussion, but if you want to talk about something else, now's the time. Okay, not hearing any comments on anything else. We'll proceed. We'll move to item number four. We can review the minutes of our July 19th meeting, since we have a quorum. Would anyone like to make any corrections or additions, changes to the minutes of July 19th?
Where are those minutes actually? Were they in the packet, Keith? I can't hear you.
Yep. Yeah, they were posted online. I should have had them in the packet, but you know, stranger things have happened. I would say if you're not comfortable, if you need to review them, I wouldn't approve them at this point, but that's totally up to you guys.
I don't want to stand in the way. I don't imagine there's anything there. I just was, I neglected to find them beforehand. And I've got, I see three PDFs in the, in the packet, but none of them is minutes.
Yeah, usually they're in, under the date of the meeting, it will say draft minutes. As soon as, which is on Monday, when they're posted generally, it should say draft minutes. I didn't look myself to see if they were there, but and then when they're approved, we change it to minutes of, so. All right, any other comments? Chris, you're okay with not commenting on the minutes?
I'm fine, yes.
All right, hearing no other comments or additions or corrections, we will just make sure that we do put them in the packet and put them on the website both next time, and we will accept these minutes into the record as written. All right, so we'll proceed to our first agenda item, which is to talk about Act 47, which we have been calling S-100. So very briefly, to summarize where we are. S-100 was a bill, and it was passed by the legislature. I think, Keith, what we might have is an actual copy of Act 47, the complete works, just so we can look at it, if you have that available. So.
Quite a long bill.
It's 76 pages. It was approved by the legislature. It was vetoed by the governor, but the veto was overridden. So it was formalized into law as Act 47. So hopefully from now on, we can call it Act 47. And I just wanted to put this up here so everyone could see the way these bills are written into the law. Basically, a whole bunch of different sections of current statutes have changes in them. There are something like 30 different sections of statutes that have been changed by this law. And we're concerned with the ones that deal with municipal zoning regulations, basically. So you can see in Section 1, it makes a change to Section 4414 of 24VSA. And the change that has been made is the underlined part. So all of this verbiage that you see is what's in the original 4414, and then the changes are the underlined parts. So that goes through a whole bunch of different categories of things, municipal regulations, Act 250, building codes, changes have been made throughout a bunch of different parts of our laws. And that can all be found on the Vermont statutes online, or you know, just type in Vermont laws, and you will be able to search for Act 47, and the whole thing will come up, or a summary will come up. So what we did last time was we took the summary that was prepared by the Legislative Council, and we took all of the items that were listed under the municipal changes, changes to municipal zoning. And we went through them, Mark and Chris, you will remember this, and there were 16 of them. And we went through and looked at the ones that appeared to need to be changed in our zoning in order to meet the needs of this statute. So this is the note that I put out, which said, we've taken these 16, we've whittled it down to about six things that we need to change. And so that's what we're going to do tonight, is we're going to look in more detail what exactly about our zoning will need to be changed in order to meet the requirements of the statute. So does anyone have any questions about that? That's the procedure that we have followed so far. And Keith and I have, you know, gone through both the summary. There was an earlier summary by section that was also helpful, and then looking at the law itself. So. All right, so we're going to start with the first item that we picked out is going to need us to change our laws to meet the needs of this act. And by the way, the act went into effect on July 1st. So if any zoning decisions have to be made before we change our zoning ordinance, the zoning administrators will have to follow this law as opposed to it will override our zoning. So this is why we would like to work ahead as soon as possible to make our zoning ordinance match the state law, so that there's no confusion about that. Okay, so we look at the first item. "A municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit." Basically, is what it says. We can go to the statute if anybody wants to see the actual language, but the actual language is pretty clear. This is not one of the ones where there's some confusion about what it's actually saying. And there are a couple of those that we'll get to later, where it's a little hard to interpret what they're saying. This is pretty clear. "A municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit." Oh, and I should remind everybody that almost all of these refer to districts, zoning districts that are served by water and sewer, and that allow residential uses. So keep in mind, those are going to be the districts that we're talking about. So anything in the village that allows residential uses, basically, those are the areas that we're talking about. Those will be our two new residential commercial districts. Well, just the one residential commercial, the Village Residential Commercial. Gateway Residential Commercial is not currently served by water and sewer. It is not affected by these changes. So the Village Residential Commercial, the Village Neighborhoods, which we're currently working on, and we'll talk a little bit more about where we are in that process when we get to the next one. Jolena Court, the downtown district, and the Village Commercial and the Commercial District, the Round Church Corners Complex. Those may be affected if residential uses are going to be allowed there as we work through that. If we are not going to allow residential uses there, this will not apply, but. All right, so any questions about that? Basically, one parking space per dwelling unit. So we have a parking table, Section 6.1. I don't know if you have that handy to pull up, Keith, but basically it says for a single-family dwelling, one parking space is required. This is across the board, the whole, all the districts in town. So we haven't broken the parking table out by whether it's in the Water and Sewer District or not. So this is going to be something that we're going to have to deal with. We have in the newly approved parking table, one space for a single-family dwelling, 1.5 for each dwelling in a duplex or a multifamily house. So there are a couple of strategies that we can use to fix this so that it meets this requirement. One is, we could break the parking table out and separate out some districts from some other districts, if we wanted to do that. Or we could change it so that it's one across the board for all districts, HDR, AR. You know, that would be a strategy. I don't know, you know, we're going to have to talk about which one of these strategies we want to take up. We could also put these requirements in the individual districts. So as part of the language of each district, it says what the parking requirement is. And in our parking table, we already have language that allows for that in Jolena Court, because Jolena Court had its own parking requirements, which will have to be changed to meet this. But we could do that for all the districts and just put this language in that, now, keep in mind, this is the minimum. You can put more, but this is the minimum that you can require.
Question about that, just in terms of, I don't know, sort of thinking ahead a little bit. In the future, will it be useful for future planning commissions or whatever to be able to go to our, our zoning and have a section that says, "The following items are, were added to Richmond zoning in specific response to this piece of, of state legislation that was passed." And then, and so that that would be an argument for not putting it into each individual section, but creating a footprint in our, our local regulations, defining where that came from at the, at the state level. And that would make it potentially easier for future planning commissions to avoid being out of compliance with that by, you know, changing something and not realizing that it was there, not because some past planning commission just thought it was a good idea, but because the state said we had to have it in there.
And how do you see that being useful, Chris?
Exactly. Well, like I just said, you know, I mean, I, I think that there might be a value to future planning commissions to know that the, whether a change that was made to zoning or a regulation is something that the, that a planning commission came up with organically or entered in specific response to a state, state legislation. One being something that a future planning commission, I think, could change, you know, as they see fit, the other perhaps not so much.
I don't know that that's ever been put in our zoning before. I mean, there have been many changes that have been made to the zoning ordinance, some of which are in response to the state, some of which are, if you want to call them organic, but we could certainly consider that, doing that. I mean, we'd have to make the change as well, but then you're suggesting that we list somewhere the changes, these particular changes. I mean, like the whole floodwater section, you know, flood plain, that was all put in because of state laws, but. Yeah.
Yeah, I was wondering, Keith, do you have any experience with other municipalities that the way they structure their, their zoning regs is so that there's sort of more of a, of a paper trail, I guess?
Yeah, there, there is a paper trail. There's a paper trail on ours to begin with, when those amendments come down the pike. Most recent, if you look at the zoning regulations, you'll see that it was updated in June of this year. It doesn't get down into the nitty gritty into exactly what happened, but it does reference all the zoning sections. I will say, in the beginning of the zoning regulations, there is references to the act or to acts that have been changed and instituted that are mandated. So there, there is a paper trail in that sense. And there certainly is a, a paper trail in the Planning and Zoning Office of these amendments, where, you know, a future planner, you know, once I'm gone, you know, would be able to access if a planning commission needed. So there is a paper trail, per se. So, so keep in mind that, that this is, as, as Virginia alluded to, that there were 30 or so different sections of this act, of which, you know, many of these sections don't even apply to us, but you know, Section 4442 does. And that's referenced in, and that's known as zoning, that's referenced in the regulations on the heading page. I'm looking at it now. It's in the overview section of it. So, yeah, so, so I mean, in a sense, it's a paper trail already.
Okay, okay. No, thanks, thanks. That makes total sense that there would be, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, so there's a whole amendment or repeal of sections that goes into it, and it tells you what you need to do, and so on and so forth. And there's just, there's just certain prerequisites that we have to do. And then you have to go to the act, go to what was changed, and you'd have to actually do that yourself, because who knows, by the time in 10 years, there might be two or three other amendments to that act. But that act does not change the section of the statute. Just the statute itself is changed as a result of the act. I don't know if I've confused myself on that one either. And if that makes sense, the act is always, it's a, not the act, the, the, the section of law is always static. But the changes through amendments is not to that static law, such as what we just experienced with S-100.
Okay.
Clear as mud.
So basically, what we feel we need to do here is to change the parking table, either by dividing things out such that certain things only apply to the village, or we can put everything that needs to be said into each individual section, which would override the parking table, the same way that Jolena Court's parking requirements currently override the section. So people can think about that, how we would like to see that structured. I don't know if anybody have any, has any comments immediately. The Jolena Court section goes by bedrooms, which is not going to fly according to this. We will definitely have to change that. But that section, that district, the Jolena Court District, already overrides the parking table. Or one thing that Keith and I talked about was just having a parking table for commercial uses and not having any residential use parking requirements in the parking table, because there are only those very few residential parking requirements in the table. It's almost all commercial, so we could just get rid of it and say, "This parking table only relates to commercial uses, to businesses." And then in each district, we would have what we wanted to have. So for instance, in the AR District, we might want to have a minimum requirement of two parking spaces. We might not. We might want to go with one, whether or not there's water and sewer. So people can be thinking about that, how they would like to go.
I, I would, I would add on to that, you know, or just, just to stack on to that, that, yeah, you, you need to differentiate between the commercial slash industrial uses and residential, because this is specifically geared towards residential. So, you know, just, just to reiterate what, what Virginia was saying, you, you need to separate those two, commercial and residential. There's nothing to do with commercial in this act. It's all about residential.
Okay, so if no one has any particular problems with that, that might be what we bring to the next phase of thinking about this, the way it would look if we just took residential out of the parking table, let's say, and put it in each one of the districts. So if you have any comments about that, you can bring them up.
Yeah, it's a pretty, pretty extensive table to, to let you know. So that's page 59 of the zoning regulations. That's where it starts.
Okay. There is also, if anyone who wants to think about this particular, number one, this parking requirement, should go to the actual document and read what it says. It does talk about this not applying to districts that do not have water and sewer, as we define them, which has some complications. And also a statement that could be a little controversial, that seems to be saying it doesn't apply if you don't have water and sewer and you are further than a certain distance away from public parking. But the way that it's written is very ambiguous. So anyway, you can go and look at that. Keith doesn't think it's ambiguous.
No, 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 I, I thought I, I thought you guys could see. I have the ordinance, I, I have our questions or one through six, and then I also have the act up, but you're not seeing the act at all?
No, we're not seeing the act. We're just seeing, we're just seeing the list of things we have to change.
Okay. So you're not seeing that, huh?
No, we did see it at one point. Oh, there we go. That's good. Now we've got them both.
All right, good.
Okay, but the pictures on my screen are over it, and I need to make them smaller somehow to minimize them. I don't know how to do that. Can you move it all, the whole thing over, Keith, somewhat to the left, or, let's see? Can I minimize, hide thumbnail video? Okay, I guess I'll do that. Then I won't see what people want to say. But anyway, okay. So if you look at this underlined language, "In any district that is served by municipal sewer and water infrastructure that allows residential uses, municipality shall not require more than one parking space per dwelling unit, period." That is very clear, the way that is stated. However, a municipality may require 1.5 parking spaces for duplexes and multifamily dwellings in areas not served by water and sewer, and, here's the question, "In areas that are located more than one quarter mile away from public parking." So the question is whether that "and" that are located more than one quarter away, whether that relates to the districts with water and sewer or the districts that were just mentioned without water and sewer. And I feel that we need to have a legal opinion about that. So, you know, the way, there's no punctuation in this sentence, so grammatically, the "in areas that are located more than one quarter mile" could be parallel to "in areas that are not served by water and sewer", referring to two different categories of things, or they could refer to the same thing. So I, let's see, how do I make this bigger now? There we go. So we're just gonna, we're gonna follow up on that and find out exactly what that means, because we want to be absolutely clear that we know what that exception is accepting. Somebody had something.
Yeah, I, I was just saying that. Is that me that's doing echo?
I think so.
You sound good here.
Ah, it's, it's sounding like an echo to me. Okay, no, that's good. Excuse me. I think they're saying that if it's a public area, public parking outside of the water and sewer area.
Yes, well, that's what Keith's interpretation is.
In, in the water and sewer area, you, you have to have one per dwelling unit. But if you're outside the water and sewer area, you can raise it if you're not within a quarter mile of public parking.
Mm-hmm, right. Yep. Well, that seems to be the favored reading of that, and I just want to make sure that that's completely correct.
So I'm just wondering, in those circumstances, instances like around Jonesville, where we happen to have a couple of parking, public parking spaces near the Huntington River, would that mean that that area in Jonesville would have to be one parking place, one parking spot per dwelling unit?
Are those the recreation, are you talking about the recreational parking area?
Yeah, it's public parking.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's, it's really municipal parking in that sense. It certainly isn't improved parking. I mean, I guess it's, it proved it's better than nothing. But is that even maintained during the year? I mean, during the winter?
Probably not, but you could argue that any, any pole along a road would be public parking.
Yep, well, that's a question that I think we need to get an opinion about. Kathleen?
That, that was going to be my suggestion is to really define what is public parking, because public parking for residential use means that you would have to have access throughout the year, and I think that should be clarified before you try to make, do an ordinance that may hinge on what public parking means.
Yeah.
This is such, yeah, this is such an outlier issue, to be honest with you. But I mean, it's an issue nevertheless, and I agree that we do need to get some clarification. I mean, I definitely want folks to be satisfied with, you know, what Dave has to say.
Yeah, and I haven't found anywhere that defines public parking. There might be somewhere in the ordinance. I don't know, Kathleen, if you come across any place where public parking, it doesn't say a public parking lot. It just says public parking. So I don't know whether on-street parking counts or not. So anyway, so we're going to look into that, but basically we know that there are going to be, have to be some changes made to our parking requirements. based on this item number one. Anybody else wanna talk about that? Let's see, Chris Grand, who have we, have we lost somebody here?
I'm still here.
Okay, Chris is here, Mark is here. Oh, Adam, are you still here?
No, uh.
Yes, Adam is still here. Okay, everybody's still here. Never mind.
Yeah, okay, ranking left, I have a, oh, I have a number, one eight oh two seven five two six one two seven. Well, let me write that down, in case they start showing pornography. I'm gonna let this person in. Excuse me, I gotta, I'm so sorry. Seven five.
Yeah, there's been a gate, a gate crashing, some gate crashing, so we're trying to be careful.
Gate crashing is an understatement if you were on the, uh, meeting, meeting last night.
Yeah, Mark, oh, I'm so sorry.
Really? Wow, I hadn't heard about this.
Yeah, and it's been two meetings in a row.
Extremely graphic visual action.
That's not good.
No. Um, can we know who one eight oh two seven five two six one two seven is calling? Could, could we have a name perhaps? Okay, well, we're gonna have to put this, oh, hello, hello?
Hey, hi, it's Linda Donovan.
Oh, hello, Linda. Great.
Hi, how are you?
Good to have you on the call, yes. We're good, how are you?
Yes. I'm good, thank you.
Good.
Took a minute to get in here, sorry.
Yeah. We're, we're trying to stay clean here.
Okay.
Okay, so, any more points about number one, the parking? Hearing none, we'll move on to number two, which says, multi, uh, where are we? Multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted use. And by the way, this statute defines multifamily units as three or more units. So if it has up to four, that means it's got either three or four. It's a duplex if, if it has two, it's not anything. If it has one, if it's over four, it's not in this group. So this is talking about buildings with three or four dwelling units in it. So, um, this has to be a permitted use in any district served by water and sewer that allows residential uses. We already put that in to the Village RC District. So that district is okay. And now, we're working on the two village neighborhoods. The Village Neighborhood North, which is being created from the HDR, carved out of the HDR, and the Village Residential Neighborhood South, which is being carved out of the AR. So, in those two districts, we're going to have to make this a permitted use. So, you know, one of the things that we have to decide here is do we want to carve those districts out? Because if we don't, if we are not taking those districts out of the HDR, then it involves the HDR and the AR. So, working along the lines that we've been working along, which is to remove those neighborhoods from their districts, that makes it a little simpler, because then we can just put this regulation into the village neighborhoods. Um, and let's see, I've got this covered up, but Keith is showing you the actual language of the act, which I'm gonna get rid of my screen here, my people. Um, so, in any district allows year-round residential development, specifically, uh, let's see. Here we are, "Any district served by municipal sewer, water and sewer that allows residential development, multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted use." And in the original versions of S-100, they said allowed. And so people were going to make it a conditional use. They changed it to be a permitted use. In other words, it has to be in that permitted list of uses. Right now, in those two neighborhoods, we have single families, duplexes. That's what we have. So this is clearly going to apply to those two districts. And so, um, like I said, in my list on the left, we have to confirm that we wish to create those two districts, else we're going to have to do something with the bigger districts. And then, we will need to just add this to the list of permitted uses, dwelling with up to four dwelling units. And the features language will have to be adjusted in those districts. The drafts that we have of those districts do not mention multi-units. They mention duplexes and single families, so we would have to add the three and four units into that language. Um, lot area density and lot coverage, we're gonna look at to make sure that you can actually do this. Because it doesn't make sense to have your dimensional requirements restrictive in such a way that you can't actually do this, because the point is to allow this. So, as we work through looking at those districts, we're gonna have to make sure that it actually is possible to do it. Okay, any, are there any questions about that? And then the other districts that will be affected, um, is the, the, um, commercial district if we're going to allow residential uses there. So, that's part of that whole question. Are we going to allow residential uses in the village commercial, which is where the grocery store is? And in the Round Church Corners complex, which is currently in the commercial district, but we would like to combine them both into the residential commercial district. That had been our plan till now. Um, and we had not finalized the question, made a final answer to the question of whether we were going to allow residential uses there. We need to discuss it with those people in those districts. But they will be affected as well if we're going to allow residential uses. Um, okay, and then there's a slight question that I've listed under number two about residential PUDs and how this relates to this language.
Yes.
So we're gonna have to resolve that. That's part of the, of some maybe technical, but also conceptual issues with the PUD section of our zoning ordinance. There's some conflicts between the PUD section and some of what the district language is currently. So, that's gonna have to be resolved. So are there any thoughts about this item number two? At the moment, thoughts at the moment, or questions about it, or? Um, I don't know whether that language that I'm seeing from the actual statute is related to that or not, but.
Oh, no, sorry.
All right, here we go. "In any district that allows year-round residential development, duplexes shall be allowed," and we already have this. You know, some of these things we could eliminate needing to make changes, because we already had it. For instance, duplexes are allowed with the same dimensional standards as a single unit dwelling. Um, but then we have multi-unit dwellings with four or fewer units shall be a permitted use. And it adds this phrase that came from Heinsberg, unless that district specifically requires multi-unit structures to have more than four dwelling units. So in Heinsberg, apparently, they have a district where you can't have any less than four units. They're specifically trying to not have single-family homes there. So that part doesn't apply to us, because we don't have any districts that require more, buildings with more than four dwelling units.
And what does dimensional standards mean in this, in this context?
Dimensional standards, well, it means the lot size, the height, the setbacks, the lot coverage. Is that it? Is that it, Keith?
That, that's basically it, yes.
I had a question, whether density is a dimensional standard, but Keith kind of convinced me that it wasn't, even though there's a number in it, which is a dwelling unit requires 5,000 square feet of land, that that is not uh, generally considered to be a dimensional standards. So, setbacks, lot coverage, height, lot size.
Well, lot, yeah, well, yes.
Is that right? This lot size, is that a dimensional standard?
Lots, lot size would, would be in with the density issue.
Okay, all right. So it's setbacks, lot coverage,
Height.
Height.
Do you mean, does that mean that you can't have any additional setbacks? If you're allowing a duplex? So like, if there's a typical, you know, whatever, ten-foot setback for a dwelling in the village, then the resident, the duplex still is allowed a ten-foot setback?
Right. You can't, you can't require more than ten feet, just because it's a duplex.
Gotcha, yeah.
Or, because it's three or four units, you can't require bigger setbacks.
Oh, even if it's three or four units? Because I think they're talking about duplexes.
In that, in that line, yes.
Are they saying somewhere else that it's also those setbacks, those dimensional standards can't be adjusted for multi-unit is, uh, homes? Buildings?
Oh, Keith, is this in the by right section where they talk about this?
No, I don't, I don't think so, but Mark's got a good, that's a good question here, you know.
Well, in, in the by right section, they talk about if the DRB wants to adjust the dimensional requirements, they can't unless they have an explanation written as to why they're doing it that meets certain criteria. That's coming up in number five, and I think that might apply to this. So the other thing that we have to look at, we, well, we have to find out the answer to that question, and we have to look at our multifamily housing standards and make sure that we haven't said anything there that is contradictory to this section.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the, the way I'm looking at it is, is the setbacks aren't going to be any different for a single-family dwelling, a duplex, a three, three dwelling unit or four dwelling unit. Setbacks are gonna be same, the dimensional standards are gonna be the same, but what you're gonna run into is going to be a density issue once you start introducing more than, uh, a duplex. So once you get to three or four, you have to have that square footage on that lot in order to, in, in order to have that permitted. Um, that's the way I would interpret that. So, you, you gotta separate the, the dimensional from the density.
But it doesn't seem to be making any allowances for density. Any waivers for density.
Not under this line, no, that is correct.
So, can you have different standards for, for, you know, if density doesn't allow it? That's the question. That's a question.
Well, you, I mean, you, you have to, in order to, to, to build a multifamily structure, let's say it's four, four units, you have a 20,000 square foot lot, and it's 5,000 square foot per unit, you're good. Right? But if you exceed that, you're not. Um, you, you, the land has to be able to support the amount of units. And in, in the exception, obviously, across the board, is for duplexes. Duplexes are treated the same as a single-family dwelling. That's the first line here. Um, and the way.
Which we already do.
Which you already do, exactly. And the way I'm looking at this multifamily is that if they're allowing that use, but you still have to meet that density requirement. It seems to this, to me, that the setbacks are, are the same, and the setbacks are the same in all districts regardless. Unless there's a, you know, unless there's a, a, some type of star on it, or asterisk or something. Um, but in this case, the way I'm, I'm interpreting this is, is that the multi-unit dwellings that's a permitted use, as long as they meet the setbacks, and, um, obviously, they have to meet the density also.
I'm not sure I'm reading that the same. I, I don't see it in the context of the whole, the whole act, but it looks like they're specifically referencing duplexes for setbacks, dimensional standards. And then they go on to say multi-dwelling units.
Yeah, but if you're gonna.
Permitted use.
Yeah, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna put in a, put in a multi-dwelling unit um, on a parcel that can't support the size of that, then you're not gonna be able to permit it.
Right, like you're, like your example, you were saying with, uh, uh, what was it, 60,000 square feet? If he has 20,000 per square feet, it was a fifth of an acre, 20,000 square feet per lot, and you only have 60,000 square feet, you can't put in a four unit.
Correct, you could only put in three in that case, yes.
Right.
If that's, yeah, yeah, and obviously, it's a lot less than that, but that, yeah, it's pretty simple math. Um, so yes, you are correct, Mark.
So, and Keith, if you have a lot that is between 5,000 and 10,000 square feet, can you build a duplex? It doesn't have anything to do with the dimensional requirements, but the density, if your density is one per 5,000 square feet, and you have, let's say, a small lot in the village, it has six or 7,000 square feet, could you put a duplex there?
You, you, you are not allowed to treat duplexes any differently than a single-family dwelling, so yes. Even though it's two units, that's, that's the exception that they're allowing with this.
Even though it only references dimensional standards?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, density is not a dimensional standard.
There's, no, it's not, and, but there is a line, there is, there is a clause that states that, that duplexes cannot be treated any differently than single-family dwellings. So, that right off the bat tells me that I, I, the density issue is, is not even an issue.
Okay, well, okay, we need to find that. We need to find where that is at some point, and pick it out, so that we're just clear about that.
Mm-hmm.
But you're feeling that density is an issue with the three and four units?
Yeah, specifically because there's a, a reference to duplexes and single-family dwellings being the same.
Mm-hmm. And if I could, uh, I think the state has provided some guidance about about density as well, which, uh, you know, and density, if, if density were to be greatly, uh, enhanced in terms of the number of units per acre that goes beyond what, uh, you know, the neighborhoods currently are, I think that, and beyond what the state, the new law is, I think that could really become problematic for people who live in those neighborhoods, so.
Well, the density is, if you, you know, go further ahead in this document, density is going to be required to be increased according to this law.
I understand that, but.
We'll get there.
You're thinking about exten, expanding even that, so I just think that would probably, and, and the lot has to be able to support three and four unit uh, density in a way that dwelling unit. dwelling units in a way that doesn't exceed the density. So.
Yeah, great. I mean, I'm good with that. I'm fine with that. I think that's good as long as we're sure that that is what's being said, so.
Hence why we're here.
Yes. Alright, so let's see, are there any more comments about the dwelling with up to four dwelling units? That number two B, any more comments about that? I can't see anybody's hands right at the moment, so you'll have to help me out with that. Um, alright, so we'll move on to number three. Bylaws shall establish lot and building dimensional standards that allow five or more dwelling units per acre for each allowed residential use. So we're okay with the residential commercial districts because we have allowed eight units per acre density. Jolina Court has 15 units per acre and the village downtown has 24 units per acre. They are in compliance with this already. The village neighborhoods, we had not suggested this for a density. And we had planned on um a unit for every 10,000 square feet. This will require a unit needing only 8,500 square feet. Um, so the density number will have to be changed in those districts that we haven't finished working on yet. Um, and we will also, I think, need to make sure that the dimensional standards will actually allow you to do this.
Oh.
So we'll have to go through and try out some scenarios to see if the setbacks and the lot coverage um, are compatible with this statement. So, um, any questions about that? Yes. Um, village commercial will also have to be changed if we're going to allow residential there. I don't seem to be able to get, oh wait, here we go. Here's my thumbnail pictures back. Any comments about that? Keith, you have anything to add to that?
No, it, it seems pretty straightforward. Um, the, the language is actually written pretty good on this one.
That's good, that's good. Yeah, so you know, Kathleen, I know this is a greater density than you and I have talked about and our planning commission meetings have talked about for the village neighborhoods. But it seems to be something that we're going to have to do.
Yep, I understand that.
So.
There are some lots that will not support that. They're just not large enough.
Right, yeah. And there are some lots, you know, for whatever reason that won't support that density. It's just saying you have to allow it if your lot permits it.
Yep.
So. Okay, and I think once again, we have to look at our multifamily housing development standards to make sure there's nothing in there that actually physically prevents it, which we don't think there is, but we need to look at it to be sure. Okay, so number four, how are we doing time-wise? Oh, we have a little bit longer. Alright, so number four says
Virginia, I'm, I'm going to have to peel out in a
Okay.
right, right now. Um, so I guess that loses our quorum, I apologize.
It loses the quorum. Hopefully Allison will come. I could text Joy, she said she could come if necessary. Um, but I don't know, I think this, we're not going to make any decisions, we're not conducting any business per se of the planning commission. It's just an informational session, so. Anyway.
Yeah, that's a great, yeah.
Great area. I don't know. I'll text Joy and see if she can pop in.
Thanks, Adam, for, for saying as long as you
Yeah, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, see you next time.
Bye, Adam.
Okay, so I've texted Joy, she said she could come if we absolutely needed her, so. Um, anyway, we're not
Them Red Sox.
We're not making any decisions, we're not conducting business, which is what you need a quorum for. It's not a public hearing, it's an informational session, so.
I think you are violating the, the law by, by conducting any business. This is business, but that's my
Um, I don't know, I looked it up in Robert's Rules of Order and it seemed to say that you can't make any decisions without your quorum. So, I mean, we could say we've ended the public meeting part of this and we're just going to go on talking. Is that a problem? I mean.
You folks need to work that out. Um, my, my, my experience is that, yeah, this is, this is a public forum and you do need a quorum, you need a quorum to, to, you know, uh, adjourn. So.
No, you can adjourn without having a quorum. That's Robert's Rules of Order. That's the one thing, the one motion that you can make is to adjourn without a quorum.
Well, maybe we should adj- adjourn and probably should have done this before Adam left, but let's just adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. And if we can get more people, we'll reopen the quorum, reopen the the formal discussion.
I feel more comfortable with that too. I mean, it just seems odd to be having, having a discussion about the business of the commission without a quorum. Yep.
Okay, so alright, well, Joy said she's going to come on to the meeting, so we could wait a minute. If you wouldn't mind holding your motion just for a minute, Mark.
Oh, yeah, it's just doing it for the intent of reopening it.
You want to adjourn and then reopen it?
Uh, yes, that would be my motion if
Okay, so he's made a motion. Chris has seconded it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor should say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote no, but the majority has it, so we will, we're, we're standing adjourned for the moment.
Got it, I'm here.
Oh, hello, thank you. Okay. So Mark, do you want to make a motion to reopen the hearing?
I would like to make a motion to reopen the hearing.
Is there a second?
For the, the, the meeting.
The, the meeting, it is not a public hearing, it's a meeting.
Second.
Chris Grandis seconds it at eight, two. All in favor of the motion should say aye.
Aye.
Alright, so the meeting is meeting is reopened. Okay. Alright, so we're talking about number four. Bylaws shall permit any affordable housing development, including mixed-use development, to exceed density limitations by an additional 40%. Now, this is mixed use, which we're assuming here, I think, to mean some market rate and some affordable or affordable housing, but it only applies if there's an affordable housing component to it. So we may have to put it in our zoning, we don't really have too many affordable housing units, but it will apply if and when we do. Which shall include exceeding maximum height limitations by one floor, providing the structure complies with the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Codes. So if it's already a three-story building, if it's, you know, or somebody is proposing a building that's going to exceed our 35-foot height, it's going to be allowed to exceed it by one floor, not providing that it complies with the Richmond Fire Department or the Richmond zoning regulations, but with the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code.
Got it.
Anybody have any comments about that? This my note was that this is likely going to have to be added as a development standard in all of the districts that are served by water and sewer and allow residential uses. We're just going to have to put that in as an item related specifically to affordable housing. We haven't really broken affordable housing out in any way in our zoning and this um piece of legislation looks like it's requiring us to have some things that are specific to affordable housing.
Yeah. I got a couple thoughts. Oh, go ahead Kathleen. I'm sorry, I was going to say something, but Kathleen has her hand raised.
Yeah, go ahead Kathleen.
I just had one question, maybe Keith has gotten more information. So when talks about mixed use, what would the percentage have to be of affordable housing units? Like, could you have one housing unit affordable and 20 market rate and call it mixed use? Or what's, is there any kind of guidance as to what what the ratio of affordable housing to either commercial or market rate?
No, I mean, yeah, if you look at the language, the word any is in there. Uh, bylaws shall permit any affordable housing development? You know, what does that mean? Uh, that's a great question. Uh, we'd have to look at what an affordable housing development means. Is that three or more units? Is that one unit? Does that apply? Um, yeah, so that, that certainly needs to be fleshed out.
And I tried to look for a definition of mixed-use development and I couldn't find one in the statutes, but there may be one somewhere. It's also used in other places to refer to something that is partly residential and partly commercial. That's how, and that's how we've used it in our zoning, but they seem to be using it as anything that has any affordable housing in a residential development.
Yeah, if it was strictly residential and, and there wasn't affordable housing component to it, this could apply. And the same with a mixed-use development that has commercial in it too. I mean, that's the way I would interpret it, as long as it complies with the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code.
Yeah, we definitely need, Linda, are you trying to say something?
No, no, I'm not, I'm sorry, one of the kids was.
Oh, that's cool. Um, Ben, Ben, my kudo pine. Uh, I was just thinking, one, mixed use is like a use, and I, residential is a use, commercial is a use, retail is a use. Um, so I can see like a mixed use, like we have at Jolina Court where there is a commercial on the first floor, residential on the second, as a mixed, including mixed-use components, but and any affordable housing, you're right, definitely needs a definition because what is the percentage of affordable housing? Are they talking about, okay, this is a, this is an affordable housing development with some commercial space on the bottom and it's 100% affordable housing? That, I'm totally on board with that. But the idea that they put in, uh, you know, they have density for 10 units and they make one affordable housing unit and all of a sudden they can go up to 14 and you know, 12 of them are, are market rate and they bump up to two the affordable housing percentage. I, I, that's, that has me definitely questioning my mind, but the, the final thought I had about that one line is is just our whole thing about 35 feet and the headaches that it's caused us over the years. And I'm just wondering, you know, if we can't address our whole stumbling block over uh, that 35-foot limit by allowing exceedance of that as long as it's in compliance with the Vermont Fire and Building Safety Code. And it's a bit of a, a tangent I'm going off on, but uh, I'm wondering what the commission's thinking about that as a sort of a sidebar.
So are you suggesting that we get rid of our 35? Is that basically what you're saying? That we don't need that 35 feet? We just need it to comply?
I, my understanding, and, and I wish Adam was here for this, maybe we should save it for the next meeting, but Adam's interpretation is that uh, the, the fire insurance regs really don't increase that much. I think he was saying, I don't want to speak for him. But uh, you know, we, our understanding, certainly my understanding on this whole time has been we keep it at 35 feet because that's what a ladder truck can get to that we have. We don't have any other access to that. But if a building is in compliance with the Fire and Building Safety Code, what's wrong with going to 40 feet if that satisfies it? That certainly shouldn't impact any of our insurance rates if we're compliant with the Fire and Building Safety Code, but I just think it's something maybe that we could explore a little bit more and, and, and have more flexibility with.
Yeah, because there are certainly
Discussion.
There are many buildings that exceed the height of a ladder. You know, think about all
Yeah, there, there, there's several.
14-story buildings, they have to be sprinkled. I mean, there are just requirements that you have to abide by, but you don't have to have it only limited by the height of your ladder.
Right, and we do. I agree with you. I think, I think we could explore that a little bit more, work those, that language into zoning and allow a little bit more flexibility with height.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I mean, if the land is limited, then the way to go is up if you don't want to go outwards, so anyway.
Right. The only thing I think we need to keep in mind to piggyback on top of this is um, viewscapes. Which is something that was a big, big talking point during the town plan discussions. There was an awful lot of emphasis on that, awful lot of interested parties. We've never really done anything with protecting viewscapes. But I think if we're going to go down that road of adding building, allowing higher building heights, we have to um add the discussion of, of viewscapes to that.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Alright, well, we'll put that on the list and you know, for the moment, we may just have to put this language in just certain districts about affordable housing projects. There are none in the wings at the moment, so that's going to be sometime in the future that this will come up. As long as we clarify what all this means, any affordable and including mixed use and all that, we clarify what the language actually means.
I'm wondering if, if you guys are aware, Keith, you're aware particularly about any uh, you know, Act 47 for Dummies language that uh is interpreting this stuff a little bit clearer. If they're putting this on all the planning commissions throughout Vermont who are, you know, even more experienced than I am, there must be an awful lot of confusion over over what they're really trying to make us do and with some clarity, there has to be some some follow-up literature and, and info for this.
Well, I mean, what they're trying to make us do is to encourage in affordable, affordable housing. This is like a density bonus that is statewide given, you know, we have talked about density bonuses with Jolina Court, our whole two years that we spent talking about Jolina Court. We weren't able to make conclusive density bonus language to fit, but the state would like more housing, they would like more affordable housing, and they're trying to make it easier, which is allowing you to have this 40% density bonus, including going up one story. So, I mean, I think their intent is clear, I think it's just that the language, the, you know, is, hasn't the language itself is not very clear. And the definitions, they haven't really given And the definitions, they haven't really given us enough definitions to be able to fine-tune it. But, I mean, to me, the extent is pretty clear.
Sure, but but how do we interpret that without knowing what they're actually saying and and what our, what our limits are and what our real guidance is?
Well, we're gonna ask, ask those questions, so.
Yeah, and and it's also about putting these these statutes into practice too, because that always takes you down rabbit holes also. And, you know, you get your resolutions through, through going through town council and all that. And that, you know, that's kind of what we're doing now. I mean, I have one question out specifically on on the uh, the 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 rights of what the DRB can do to
Number five, which we're coming to, yep.
Right, I mean, that that went out earlier today. Um, and uh, you know, because we're both, we're, we're very confused about that. So, uh, it is about putting it into practice and and going through the nastinations of of applying these statutes. It 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 always baffles me, and I know I'm kind of getting on the soapbox, is that the legislature doesn't really talk to the planning commissions or even to the people on the ground, like the zoning administrators, on how are we going to enforce this? How are we going to enact this? Um, so I mean, as of right now, all, this is all law, that if somebody comes to us with with development potential, we have to follow this statute. So, it it is, it is a work in progress. There's no doubt about that.
And, you know, over time, the next few months, obviously, we'll be reaching out to the league, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, who is probably getting lots of these questions, and also to CCRPC that we assume are going to answer these questions for us. So.
Yep.
All right. Anything else about number four? Anybody want to talk about number four anymore? Okay, I don't see any hands. So we'll move on to number five, which was the one that was the most difficult for us to understand. It states that it is a section, it's section ten of the law. Um, and it heads the section by right. So that's the first thing that we need to understand exactly what that means, what by right means. You can see up here, it says by right. So, and the language seems to be saying, and anybody can chime in with this, that
Please.
You can you have to, if the appropriate panel, which in our case would be the DRB, wants to disallow a development by modifying the standards that are needed, they have to have a written finding with the reasons, with the exact reasons. So it doesn't exactly say that you can't change any of the standards for um a mixed-use development. But it does say that if you're gonna change the standards, then you have to have, make a written declaration and give actual reasons. So, that seems to us to be what it's saying. And if any of you want to ponder this for some light reading and try to work out exactly if that's what it's saying, then that would be good. This is one we definitely, as Keith said, have reached out for some help on.
Yeah, I'd be very interested to to, you know, have have the board engage on this particular question and and see what your interpretations are after you dissect it.
Well, I can tell you right off the bat, I I'm not really aware of any DRB decisions that have restricted uh, dimensional requirements.
I would agree.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would agree with you, Mark. I think, you know, they haven't gone out of their way, but there haven't been a lot of housing development, so to speak, that were of any size or the housing portion of a mixed-use development, that they might be interested in, you know, that that public, the public input might be, don't you want to require more parking, or don't you want to limit the building size? Or, you know, maybe they haven't been requested to do it. And that's good, you know, they're not doing it, and maybe we're, maybe we're in compliance already with this, but we probably have to put something in there just in case the DRB feels that it would like to make some restrictions when they shouldn't be.
Yeah, when, when you look at seven A here, I mean, it's obviously saying that it's, the DRB in this case shall not require a larger lot size, require more parking spaces. You just can't do that. But it's B that's got me flummoxed. Um, you know, however, the decision may require adjustments to the applicable municipal standards listed in Sub Session A. As you go up there, that that includes parking spaces, whatever. Um, um, if the panel or officer issues a written finding stating why, so on and so forth. So to me, that seems that variances for dimensional standards might be going out the window with this clause. Um, I'm, I'm not sure on how to read this, and that's why this was sent to Dave, but I'd be very interested to see how uh, the panel, the the commission here um interprets this. Yeah, Kathleen, absolutely.
I just had, what, I mean, one thing that uh could, I think the DRB could apply would be some of the environmental constraints of a parcel. So for instance, if there were a wetland delineated and uh, a, a, a wetland boundary established, or you know, they, that could be something where they would have to. I don't know.
And it says, it says that.
Flood plane.
Setbacks for
It says, including requirements related to wetlands, setbacks, and flood hazard area and river corridors. So you know, those are sort of covered. If there are others, they don't really mention them, but those particular ones seem a, a mechanism seems to be carved out for them to change the set, you know, reduce the requirements if they have any of these things, and they issue a written finding.
Right. Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that's good. This has to be in the, some rationale has to be in the finding, and then of course, the appeal. So there is a
Right. And then there's this section that says, as long as it doesn't result in an unequal treatment of housing or an unreasonable exclusion of housing development. So, you would have to word that carefully to make sure that, you know, you were complying with that.
Well, Dave, with all of his experience, legal expertise heading the DRB, I'm, I'm not as worried about this one as implementing some of these other findings that have been addressed, that have been brought up tonight. I think, I think that that one's gonna be fairly easy. I think they've got a pretty good crew on the DRB that critiques this stuff. And like I said, I don't think they're big on adding extra limitations on things, probably more, you know, appearances. Yeah. Shielding of vegetation in those types of interpretations more so than anything else.
Mm-hmm. And it may be that this was put in thinking of specific places that are kind of different from Richmond, you know, where it's been a problem, that multifamily projects have been um, proposed that have a lot of character of the area complaints. And so the appropriate body has, you know, changed the setbacks or whatever, you know, things that might not have happened very much in our situation. That's all I'm saying, but.
This is murky to me, but we'll get it unmurkied.
Yeah, we're working, working on that one. Okay, and then, so those are really the only ones that apply to our zoning ordinance. Then the other one that applies to us, but it's about the town plan, is that we need, we're going to be required to put an additional um, amount of detail in the housing element of the municipal plan. And the, the detail involves the goals for housing and how we're gonna get there, including affordable housing. So, you know, this is gonna be something that we're gonna have to work on over time before twenty twenty, well, twenty twenty-five, we're gonna have to start working on the town plan. The Housing Committee should be working on this to develop additional detail for the housing section of the town plan. And, you know, more information will have to be forthcoming about exactly how that's gonna be done. So. All right, well, so that's a first run-through. Anybody have any final comments about this? Before we move on to our next agenda item, that's kind of the first look at what we're gonna have to do and what the questions we have and what you all can be thinking about. Hopefully, we'll have some more answers for you for next time. Kathleen?
I just had a question um, about the, the process of, I think it's great, the planning commission and Keith, or that you're all really working to understand what this means, to know that time is, is of certainly some importance. You, you also are gonna be ruling this out to the public in such a way that I can let my neighbors know when that would be discussed, or you'll be contacting neighbors directly. Is there a timeframe for that?
Well, the only timeframe that we've set so far is that our next, well, this meeting and our next two meetings, the first hour or so, we're gonna spend talking in general about these concerns, about these questions, what we have to do, what kinds of things we have to do. And then we can see how that goes. And if, you know, we don't have a lot more people who want to just talk about it in general, then we'll move on to talking about it in terms of specific districts. And there will be, you know, some things that we will have to talk about in terms of other districts besides the neighborhoods, but then the neighborhoods are the ones that um, we were working on, so we will continue to work on, but we will have to incorporate this. So, anyway, it's likely not gonna be the next two meetings. The next two meetings, we're still trying to understand it and get the specifics down. And, you know, if anybody in your neighborhood wants to come and just hear about the issues that we're grappling with, that would be great. Um, before we start putting it into a draft form for the neighborhoods, for instance. Does that answer your question, sort of?
Um, yeah, yeah. But I think whenever there will be a discussion with the neighbors, neighborhoods or whomever, public, it will be really helpful to try to give some overview of of Act Forty-Seven, because it, it's going to have a, an impact on the zoning in different parts of the village, areas served by water and sewer. So whatever, you know, I know there will be sections of the bylaws, but a good overview would also be helpful.
Well, that was supposed to be what we were doing tonight and the next two meetings. The first part of each meeting was to provide an overview for anybody, and it was advertised in the front porch forum. I don't know if you think it could be advertised more. This is the overview part. What is Act Forty-Seven, and what kinds of things, changes are we gonna be looking at?
Yeah, I don't know that people understood that this was their opportunity to get the overview, but uh, maybe a short overview when you have those public sessions would be helpful.
I, I, I would, I would term it as, as uh, an opportunity, not, not the. I mean, there's certainly gonna be more opportunities for sure, Kathleen. I think that's the intent. We have two more of these. Um, and, you know, I, I think that what we're trying to do is, is as a commission, we're also trying to get our arms around this too, because we want to talk intelligently about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we have talked about putting something on our pay, on our planning commission page on the town website, kind of an overview. And we could try to put kind of an overview in the newspaper or the front porch forum. I mean, Kathleen, what do you think would reach people? So that they had something to look at that was an overview.
I don't know that you have, there probably are some documents that provide that information that you, so you don't have to recreate it. Uh, but uh, you know, letting, letting people know, even if, if this is the, if this is the, our opportunity, people will still have questions about the law that applies to zoning. So uh, I did, I'm not sure that a working session like this is really gonna be sufficient. And people don't know about, that this is where they're supposed to come and learn about it. This is the
Mm-hmm.
So I think, I mean, front porch forum, maybe, but I think this kind of session where people actually know, if you combine the two things, some overview, and this is what we're looking at for your zoning district, that will get their attention.
Right, yeah. Well, we're not looking at it specifically for the zoning districts until we feel like we understand it, but yeah, we'll, we'll try to have something more. I mean, there is the summary of the act as enacted, that's a pretty short document. It's not super short. I mean, it's complicated enough that it's hard to make it super short, but we can work on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Thanks for coming, Kathleen. All right, so we have just a little bit more time. We can put this aside for the moment, but we'll revisit it in even more detailed form next time, or in some form or other. Um, so we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is number six, other business. Keith is gonna give us an update on the Rogers Lane project.
Yeah, so, so basically, at this point, I have a meeting tomorrow with two of the five landowners, not two of the five land, or two of the part, one parcel owner. Let me start over again. I have a meeting with a uh, a family that owns two of the parcels on Rogers Lane, the Spences. Uh, Luis and Ernest, and um, I'm gonna hear them out tomorrow at three o'clock and and be able to report back at the next meeting as to, you know, what's going on. My understanding is that their son wishes to do something of a commercial nature. I don't know what that is. I don't know how that would fit in, potentially into uh, what we're, we're planning on doing there, which I believe is going to the high-density residential uh, district and what the uses are there. So that's kind of the update there. I will say that Zachary and Michelle Beal, I've had some court, some contact with them, talking about um, you know, having, having them be proactive, especially with, I believe it's, it's, it's Justin um, from the uh, uh, propane parcel. Uh, and so, so things are moving forward. Again, it's the, it's the summer. It's, it's hard to get people to, to concentrate to a certain extent. But uh, I'll have more information tomorrow uh, at, at, at some point as to how, how the Spences wish to proceed, and we can certainly get some type of tenor from them on, on how to go forward on that. Um, and that's really where we're at uh, at this point. So, you, we're just just trying to gather that information at this point. So, that's the update on, on Rogers Lane.
Thank you. Um, Linda, do you have anything that you would like to add to that? Have you heard anything? You obviously were one of the people that got the letter about what we were thinking about doing. Um, have you talked to any of your neighbors? I think it's Jason, by the way, with Patterson, not Justin.
Jason, yeah, correct. It is, yeah, it is Jason. And actually, Bill reached out and did talk to Ernie, which Ernie um, the very first time we asked him back in two thousand eighteen, he, all he, you know, it's more of an old-school um, kind of meet and greet thing, and he just wanted to see what we were looking to cross, which when he saw it, he was like, oh, that made no difference to him. So, um, we have been in we have been in contact again. We actually, I think we're looking to talk with Ernie. And if you're saying you're meeting with him tomorrow at three, we may possibly pop over and join you, if that's okay, Keith?
Well, I think that, that would be up to them, because they requested a meeting with me. If you could reach out to them.
Okay. Yep, we'll give. Okay, we'll give them a call and. I didn't hear that. What's that?
I said, if you, if you're going to crash the meeting, bring some ribs and fried chicken. That's all I ask.
All right, I'll remember that. We'll give them a call in the morning. And you mentioned a letter. I did not get a letter.
Well, there was one, one definitely sent to your husband.
Okay. Was it sent to the P O box or to our mailbox on Rogers Lane?
It was a P O box.
Got it. That's why. Okay, I'll go get it tomorrow.
Is that, is that the good address that you want us to use or what?
No, it is, no, it is not. Nothing makes it to me from that address. So 90 Rogers Lane is the address that you should use.
Yeah, so that, that came off through the listeners' addresses.
Yeah, I've had them change things over the years, but I think that, that is, I think the tax bill still goes there, but 90 Rogers Lane will get to me. I will go, I will get it tomorrow from the store and it's likely in a pile somewhere. So.
Yeah.
But sometimes, sometimes things get sorted differently and I just, I'll go grab it. So it wasn't something that was on my radar. I did speak with Jason. He actually has no problem with having that residential commercial. He, he was just like, you know, he was good with it. He, I don't know if he's reached out to you guys or, you know.
Yes, at this point, and we kind, that's kind of a prerequisite too. So we definitely need to have that conversation with him.
Okay.
Yeah, and what I explained.
Not one to reach out. He's more of, hey, Jason. And, you know, he hasn't had any problem. He says, he doesn't really, he's not interested. He, you know, in developing anything, he's, you know, the only reason that he's sitting on the land that he's on is Bill had, he went to Bill one day and asked about it. So he said, you know, if there's something that you guys want to do back there, he says, we're all neighbors. He says, we'll work together if it's something that you want to purchase. So our engineer at some point will, depending on where we get with all of this, will go back there and take a look at not only ours, but his, in case we decide to subdivide with him and purchase that from him. The other thing is, we do have somebody coming, because the last time I had a wetlands delineation done, lucky me, was 2018. So it's the five-year mark. So Michelle has gotten in touch with them, and they will come back and do another delineation. I think they're coming out next week.
That's, that's really good news, you know, to get that out of the way. And that's, and that just basically puts it in the hopper for the next five years. So.
Right. And the thing is, is our, our engineer, originally it was July, and with the weather and their projects, he's now saying September before he can take a look. So we'll square things up between Jason and the Spence family. And because back in 18, Ernie and his wife, we all walked up and down the street like we did with you guys not too long ago, you know, and we took a look at the maps and where it was, and he really didn't have a problem. It was said that his son wanted to at some point. I think they, I think he wants to store his, his equipment over there eventually. I don't know if he just wants to put a garage, kind of like Land Shapes has. But I think that's always been the long haul decision was where the trailer is now, is to, because that's what he does. He does excavation work.
Okay.
So that was our discussion in 18.
Okay. Yeah, we'll see what he comes with tomorrow. And we'll see how we can get this, you know, to fit in, hopefully. But, you know, got to gather that in first. So fantastic.
Yeah, and Linda, what we explained in the letter to Patterson, Jason, or whoever at Patterson, was the question about, you know,
Oh, Jason, yeah.
Putting the upper part, the northern part of his property into this H D R district. So his commercial uses would be restricted. They're not to zero, but they are going to be restricted from what he has commercial uses now with his, where the tanks are. So we were talking about splitting the district into two, so that the, where the tanks are is still in the I C district, the industrial commercial district, and the upper part is in a residential district. So.
Yep. And that's basically how I explained it to him. And he said that he had no issue with that.
Okay, great.
I mean, he's, he's not one to necessarily reach out. I'm sure that he'll probably get a phone call from one of you, because that's kind of how he works. He just is like, I am all done with anything commercial. I'm all done with, you know, the Act 250 and anything like that. He says, I just, I'm all done. I bought a place in Florida, and he says, I just want to kick back. So he's not really interested in what's up there. He said he doesn't even know what he has up there. I probably know better what he has up there than, than he does. And I've, I've called him a couple of times and asked him if I can, you know, if he's interested in selling, he's like, yep, let me know what I have up there. He says, we'll talk about, he said subdivision, where the line would be drawn. He says, we'll just, we'll work on it as it comes along.
Great.
Great. Okay, so I'll attempt to reach out to him at some point and, you know, maybe make a visit. Um, is, is he, does he, he does live in the town? Is that correct?
Does he live within the town?
Yeah, is he in the town?
He does not live here. I believe he lives in Virginia. But if you call, if you call Patterson's in the mornings, he, he's around.
Perfect. Okay, great.
Okay.
Excellent. All right. So we're, we'll keep, keep that one moving along. Any comments or questions from commissioners about that?
No, looking forward to fast track it. It's something that just makes so much sense and.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah, working on it.
Working on it. All right, and let's see, the only other thing that we had on the list was just a brief note from the Housing Committee. The Housing Committee is working on putting together with Keith's help, a report to give to the Select Board about the researches that have been done into affordable housing in the village, which are bleak-ish. So anyway, the Housing Committee would like to give this report to the Select Board and get some further direction from the Select Board about what they should be working on. Should they be working on just increasing housing in general? Refocusing on affordable housing outside the village? What is the goal here? So that's being worked on, and we're going to talk about it at our next meeting, the next draft of this presentation.
I'm going to sign off, everybody. Have a good night.
Okay, great. Thanks, Linda. Yeah.
Yep, take care. Bye-bye.
So the Housing Committee will have something for us to review?
Yeah, it's, well, yeah. I mean, the Housing Committee is putting together this presentation, but it can certainly come to the Planning Commission. It's for the Select Board, because the Select Board formed the Housing Committee with the particular task of figuring out how we can have affordable housing. And it's, in this area, extremely difficult to find a suitable place to have affordable housing that hasn't got a lot of drawbacks or negatives. The affordable housing, you know, they've met a couple of times with the affordable housing entities like Champlain Housing, Cathedral Square. And they just, we don't have the space. We don't have big enough lots that are served by water and sewer.
Yeah.
There are many negatives about all of these, including the ballpark, which we need for public open space. So, you know. So the Housing Committee feels that the Select Board should understand that we, we're not, you know, like the Planning Commission, Mark, you remember when we were talking about affordable housing with Jolena Court? It was very difficult to make any progress with it. So.
Oh, yeah. Why would they give up any money that they can make money on a, a market rate? I'm not surprised. You know, Jolena Court's its own thing.
Yeah. And all the other pieces that they looked at, the Far Farm, the Fars don't want to put, they don't want to develop it, they want to farm it. Well, you have to respect that. So there's the Far Farm, there's the Willis Farm. The Reeps are not really interested in affordable housing. There's Jolena Court, and then there's the Ball Field. Those are the four parcels that seem to have any prospect of being developed with affordable housing. And they all have serious drawbacks that are, you know, do not seem to be promising leads. So anyway, just looking for the Select Board to provide some direction. I don't know if we would like to provide them with more direction.
We'd like to hear what they have to say, but you're right, all four of those parcels aren't really available and practical for different reasons.
Right. Yep. So, and, you know, I mean, Act 47 does address affordable housing by removing some regulatory barriers, but it doesn't obviate the problem of having to have a space to do it. You know, actually to have a lot that is suitable or to have the land. I mean, maybe the town would like to, if they want to be really serious about it, buy something. You know, maybe the person in Jericho who's going to come and talk to us at some point is going to let us in on some kind of secret, how you can obtain a piece of land. In Heinsburg, the town was given a piece of land.
That's the idea behind, behind having Susan Breezy come and talk to us. There's no secret about it. It's just how they did it.
Yeah. I mean, and our water and sewer service area is very small. It's very limited in terms of what's available. So, you know, maybe we should start, or the Housing Committee should start looking elsewhere outside of the water and sewer service area for a way to make a project that isn't served by water and sewer. But, oh, well, you can't have everything, you know, they could have a group, a group system. Or maybe they should be concentrating on the mobile home park where there is room to expand. And maybe there's some kind of incentives that the town would like to be providing, or, you know, they don't want water and sewer from the town, but if we're serious, that is a place where there could be additional affordable housing. So anyway, some direction from somebody, the Housing Committee is very small. There's only three people on it. Mark, I'm assuming you don't still want to be an alternate on that committee? You're welcome to come to the meetings. There are only three of us. So there's a pretty much limit to what we can do.
Yeah, no, I understand. I appreciate all the effort you put into it, for sure. But I'd, I'd love to hear what's going on, if, if it's going to be at the Select Board, maybe at a Select Board meeting, maybe just a heads up to the P C and an email glass saying, this is the night we're presenting, just so that I can catch it and, you know, here, rather than doing a separate presentation to both committees, which is redundant. And like you said, you know, time's valuable. Just giving us a heads up when, when you go before the Select Board, and we can dial, I can, I can dial in. Hopefully the rest of the commission can too, and, and pay attention, because it's, it's also in our bailiwick.
Right. Well, and we can send you the presentation when it's ready. It's.
A PowerPoint or something.
Yeah, it's kind of a PowerPoint with slides.
Yes. Yeah, we, still though, there's probably a nice question and answer session with the Select Board that, you know, we should just be, you know, it'd be great to, for this committee to be aware of when that happens, just so that we have the opportunity to participate if we can.
Yep. Yeah, well, it's likely they'll be given at least five minutes on the agenda. So, I mean, the Select Board has a number of things that they're dealing with. So we're anticipating this might be in November or October or something. Anyway, that's the report from the Housing Committee.
Stay tuned.
Yep. All right. So is there any other business? Anybody have anything else they want to bring up? Or?
No, I'd almost like to call it early.
Well, it's too late to call it early, but you can call it.
We've got nine minutes. We could.
Nine minutes.
Ask in our own private time, otherwise dedicated to the P C.
I do have a quick question. When, when do we think we want to talk to Susan Breezy?
When, when, when is she available? I think that's the first question.
Yeah, no, I still, I still need to call her, but I, I, maybe I'm confused with, because I, I think you, we were talking about bringing her to this meeting, and I couldn't turn it around that quickly. But when, when should I, are we just open to whenever she's available?
Yes. So next meeting or the meeting after that, or, yep, either of those would be fine. And don't schedule her for the first hour.
Oh, okay.
She could come at eight o'clock. Hopefully she'd be able to do that. If she, if she can't come that late, then I wouldn't schedule her for one of the next two meetings, because I've already said the first hour, the seven to eight hour, is going to be talking about S 100.
Gotcha.
So she could come at a later meeting, anyway. And Chris, you and Mark are, and Joy are okay with the way we're proceeding with the S 100 discussion? Do you have any suggestions or?
There's so many questions we need to have answered, you know, it's, it's very tough to do until we start getting more guidance, honestly, from the legislature, I think.
Well, I don't know that we're going to get it from the legislature, but we might get it from the Legislative Council or V L C T or.
I'd look to V L C T. And, but I, 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 I'm sympathetic to Kathleen's concerns too, you know, but, but there's always, it's always the, that's the, the question, you know, it's like, how, how do you reach out to, to, to contact the people who will care? And I don't have a good answer for that.
Right. And I mean, her other point that she made in an earlier letter was, don't put anything on paper about the districts until you're sure that you understand everything. So we took that to heart, and this is what we're trying to do now, is to try to understand it before we actually put anything in writing about those districts. So, you know, we can try to do some more publicity, but.
Just do the best we can. I mean.
Do the best we can.
Yep. And then when we invite those people in, you know, they'll all have the same questions, but we'll have the answers, hopefully, by then. So.
Okay. Well, I would like to move that we adjourn. I'll second that movement.
All right. And all in favor of adjourning should say aye.
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 Aye. Great. I think it's unanimous. So we will adjourn.
Again, Joy for, for signing.
Yeah, thank you very much, everybody.
No problem. Have a good night, you guys.
Good night.